Well, good people, it is actually after five o'clock. Had to take a few moments just to greet each other here. I feel like we are, our timing has been thrown off a little bit with this schedule change, and it seems like it's been a long time since we met in this way last. So, so good to see everybody. Glad we're starting late so everybody can be here right on time. Commissioner Cooney, good to see you. So, anyway, I'm officially calling to order then, this meeting of the Kalamazoo City Commission Committee of the Whole for Monday, May 13th. And as always, our first order of business, Clerk Borling is to call a roll.
Commissioner Cooney.
Right.
Commissioner Decker.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Pradel.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here, thank you Clerk Borling. May I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Pradel from this meeting?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman.
Support.
Supported by Vice Mayor Hess. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. I did get, I was contacted by Commissioner Pradel where something happened, so I was notified he was not going to be here for this meeting. Communications Manager Rissman.
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Now is the time for public comments, so just a reminder that this is our Committee of the Whole meeting, and at Committee of the Whole meeting, the comment time is two minutes. We will also have a public comment opportunity at our business meeting that starts at seven. Please come forward and state your name, where they live in the city, and you have the opportunity to put your name over here if you want to have it in the minutes.
My name is Roland Bennett. I actually live at 1011 Crown Street in Kalamazoo Township on the west side, but I have, we get water services from the city. We always have. I pay my water bill to the city. And I've been at a house fifty years. I've been off and on at a house up on the street, never had any problems whatsoever with the water in any way, except for when occasionally they're working on it. Daniel might see some sand or some colored water, you know, but unless they're working on it, we have not any problems. And my concern is today that they are tearing up the streets, very costly, very time-consuming, a big hassle, gets in everybody's way, and makes it eyesore, and I know they've done this on Pinehurst Street, which is over close to where I am. And this is not cheap, what you're doing. I mean, to repave roads, and by the way, we have a very good, nice, freshly repaved road where we're at, and to redo this and have to repave it, and the idea of putting these big pipes, new pipes in, without proper justification, that is the issue, is on what basis are they making a decision because, okay, we're going to rip up this road, or this one, or that one? So, I got here early, I was trying to talk to people about who was supervising, the supervisory chain of command, who I should talk to, you know, whether it be, as a James Baker Director of Department, or whether it be, you know, if the county commission, county has anything to do with it. But I do, I suspect that it's the city department is controlling this, and what I would want to convey is that we don't want a necessary boondoggle, a big costly waste of time, just to get something worse. And as I had in Flint, if you don't think you can get something worse, a lot of money goes, you get, Flint is an example. So this is what I want to kind of alert people to, is let's, let's not just base money levels, just free money, just to do things that are unnecessary. So that's why we're here today, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our mic, there we go. Sit down now. Scott's got it, thank you Scott.
Hello, thank you for the shared work. Okay. There we go. Thank you Commissioners for supporting this resolution and support of Bill 4947, which rescinds the ban on rent stabilization measures. This is the very first baby step in lifting up the voices of tenants who are overburdened by rent and struggling on bearable budget according to the ALIS statistics. The reality is that we have lots of work to do in terms of alleviating the housing crisis, and for this, it is necessary to shift our views on what affordable housing really means. Of course, on paper, affordable housing developments meanwhile, such as the downtown voucher ready and the possible Hawthorne Park 209 East Stockbridge development, which means nothing when in reality it's going to flood out longtime community residents and add to the climate catastrophe by destroying the last green space for miles. I digress. This isn't about the minimal affordable units these developments offer, it really is about adding to the social realities and the barriers that tenants face when trying to rent in the city of Kalamazoo, such as income-based discrimination. Affordability and voucher ready means nothing when, I quote US Department of Housing and Urban Development Pro Housing Report, many local landlords will not accept households with vouchers. If they do, they often raise the rent rates to a level that even with voucher makes the unit unaffordable to low-income families. When Sherilyn Parsons Housing Development Project Corner was asked if the voucher-ready development was going to make a dent in the ALIS statistics, she said no, though she gave the runaround. To add to this, affordability means nothing when eighty to sixty percent AMI is considered low-income. It was said in these chambers that usually those higher income brackets absorb all the affordable housing so that there isn't many options left for the zero to forty percent. This Hawthorne Park development and the destruction of this last natural space in this area is directly tied to the misuse of ARPA funds for the farmer's market, just like Arcata Creek Festival site, which will, and has partially received three million, two hundred thousand dollars. The farmer's market is walking distance from this community and natural space. The city and the Mayor Anderson, and Mayor Anderson specifically through the LIF Foundation know the MDEQ reports because of the environmental impact and the flooding in this already established neighborhood, but has ignored them because gentrification is more lucrative. All they see is dollar signs and not the people or the climate crisis. With these farmer market improvements, it is appealing to gentrifiers to build an affluent community over the working-class community who has lived there for decades. This community has been very vocal about the situation, even going to the news, so I beg you to look at the perspective of the people and not the perspective of developments. These developments cannot be affordable if the barriers.
Thank you. Next, please.
Can you hear me? My name is Jonah Espinoza. So it's crazy with this housing situation, even when somebody reaches out to help you, it's, it's not that easy to secure housing, because I'm still going through a whole nother situation with my landlord because I brought up the conditions of the house. So, I am not going to court until next month, so that is stopping me from securing housing, but even then, you have to make three times the amount of rent. Like, who can make that much when you are a paraprofessional at KPS? This needs to stop. Like, rent shouldn't be raised four hundred and fifty-plus dollars, you shouldn't have to make three times the amount, and when this, the landlords have too much power, the tenants, nothing. And so, why should it be the tenants' fault when the city allows homes to look like this? And the only time they can't collect rent is when it's condemned. Maybe you guys should look at the housing code and amend it and figure out a solution, because each building should be inspected every time before somebody moves in. These houses look like they're about to fall apart, but then they still can collect rent, people can still stay there, and how is that okay? It needs to be looked at ASAP, because the only time they can't collect rent is when it's condemned. And they don't even have to have that many inspections, like, you guys really need to look into that, because that's not okay. You guys are putting our children in harm's way. It's okay to pay rent in a house that's basically falling apart, and then when they come and inspect it, it only has to pass certain things, like in mine, all they had to do was paint the porch, even though the heat didn't work upstairs, the shower didn't work upstairs for, for half the time I lived there, there was rotus and things was falling apart. So how is that fair to the tenant? And then when you stand up and ask for help, they take action against you and want you to get out. So please look into this, it really, really needs to be paid attention and looked into.
Thank you. I think there's something wrong with it, maybe just push it up and don't hold on to it.
Is it, there we go, there we go. Hello, my name is Tristan Jessup, I'm a lifelong resident of Kalamazoo and an organizer with We the People Michigan Action Fund. I want to come out today to offer my thanks to those commission members who have met with me and my fellow organizers over the last three months to discuss the statewide ban, lift the thirty-five-year-old statewide fight to lift the thirty-five-year-old ban on rent stabilization. Commissioner Cooney, Wilson, Decker, Pradel, and Vice Mayor Hess, your willingness to sit down and to discuss this issue with us has restored some faith in our ability to create positive and necessary change through respectful collaboration with our elected officials. Your input during the discussions we had was very valuable, and it helped us to refine our messaging, strengthen our research and preparation, and sharpen our strategy to argue effectively, to appeal to those in positions of power locally and at the state level. This experience will continue to inform our efforts to advocate on behalf of renters in our future organizing and in our future collaboration with you as well. We are very much looking forward to next Monday's regular business meeting and the passage of the resolution that we spent weeks developing. This is only a small part of our campaign to pressure state legislators to pass House Bill 4947 and to develop a new political landscape in which the influence of ordinary citizens is greater than that of the wealthy, private individuals and corporations. The future of our struggle to secure renters' rights will involve addressing many other issues, both locally and statewide, but we are inspired by this city's commitment to bring one of Michigan's leaders in the fight for progress. Thank you for a thousand times for your support. We look forward to a future of Michigan where working-class people and their families can live free from the fear of losing their homes due to lack of affordability. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor, and Vice Mayor. My name is Adrian Seiya, I am the Director of Public Policy and Advocacy for YWCA Kalamazoo. Today I come before this body to ask for your partnership and support of YWCA Kalamazoo's essential gender-based violence and reproductive health care services through the City Initiatives Fund. YWCA Kalamazoo's mission is to eliminate racism and empower women. At the core of our mission, we seek to address both the immediate needs of our clients and barriers to equity for those most vulnerable and marginalized across our community. This includes women, people of color, identities that align with LGBTQIA+ and non-binary, survivors of violence, and individuals working to make ends meet. Through our many programs, we work to fill critical gaps in community services while working to ensure individuals have access to various supports, such as reproductive health care, emergency shelter, childcare, and other wraparound services for individuals seeking to live wholly, authentically, and free from violence. In recent years, our organization has seen a growing need for services paired with increasing barriers and challenges that individuals face while seeking access to essential programs and supports. The holistic and comprehensive services families can expect to receive from YWCA Kalamazoo requires consistent financial support. Funding provided by the city of Kalamazoo can and will play a pivotal role in ensuring YWCA Kalamazoo can continue to fill the ever-expanding gaps of support for families and children in Kalamazoo, and the life-saving programs can remain available and accessible for those most marginalized for years to come. This in turn makes Kalamazoo safer, healthier, and more equitable outcomes across Kalamazoo a reality as well. Supporting and investing this work brings Kalamazoo one step closer to being a safe and equitable place to thrive, therefore, we ask the Kalamazoo City Commission to consider YWCA Kalamazoo to the allocation of funding for the City Initiatives Fund. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Maddie Jordan Woods, and I am a homeowner on the north side. I would like to thank you for at least looking at a program that is going to address how the housing is going and how the rents, and maybe the solution is that you don't just have rent control, but instead what you do is that for the developers who are willing to truly provide affordable housing, that you give your dollars to them. And that way, you can't have landlords saying you're not allowing them to have a free market. But they shouldn't be able to use city dollars that are meant for low-income people to pretend like they're doing workforce housing, when they're, if you don't have a voucher, then you can't live there. So I just want to thank you for looking into it and looking at that there may be two sides to the solution, that the city funnel their dollars to the developers who are truly providing low-income housing. And the second thing is, again, to, I want to thank the Community Development Department, they are working with the North Side Cultural Business District, we are looking at, because the reality is that if you don't find a way to assist people with building their income, their wealth income, then they will always be in the back. And so, I want to thank them, because one of the priorities was to increase the number of resident-owned businesses in the district, and they are working with us and some other things, and we, we just had a meeting with Western this afternoon on some other parts of what we can do in the district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to provide a comment for this meeting this evening? Seeing no one, then I'm going to close, well, now's your chance then, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Mitch, I live in the city of Kalamazoo. I first came to speak to you guys at the beginning of last school year, and some of you, I think, are new faces, some you guys have seen before. Has gotten a lot better out there, our crossing guard got hit a few more times, and I've just kind of been quiet since then, but the, in the wake of that, it was a, seems like an organized response on that side of the school, and we've just kind of left the portage side of the school to fall apart. No one's come to refresh the word "school" on the pavement even in the last two school years, and there's no other signs that indicate it's a schools. There's a lot of commercial vehicles that speed in and out of there, you know, every day. Spoke to the traffic, traffic officer, excuse me, today, and he says he, he writes about twenty tickets through there every week, so, he's, he's trying to patrol both sides of the school, and it's just one person, so that's kind of difficult. Yeah, I'm sure there's more, but that's the gist of it. If you have any questions, I will answer them while, too, if you're curious.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to provide a comment for the Committee of the Whole meeting this evening? So I want to thank everyone that took the time and the effort to come down here to take advantage of our public comment period. We'll be moving on to our agenda to the work of the Committee of the Whole this evening. Manager Rissman.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson, and just to kick things off here, I'm going to invite our Chief Operating Officer Laura Lamb. So, just to set the stage here, each year we provide, in our budget, funding for city commission initiatives, and we have some balances carried forward from prior years, and we also have the current year allocation of, I believe it's a hundred thousand. So, just want to open it up for discussion on how to utilize those funds, and this is, what, probably the third step in what we've gone through with identifying potential ideas, and then whether they're legal or not, and now you've prioritized them, so Laura's going to kind of walk you through that.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I think you took my talking points, Jim, so I think we're all set. No, I'm just kidding. So as Jim mentioned, we're talking about the city commission initiative funding for 2024, you have a hundred thousand dollars allocated in the budget. We also had a carryforward of a little over ninety thousand from 2023. You guys started the conversation in January, generating a number of ideas, as the city manager referenced, that then Attorney Lial dutifully went through and evaluated at length to try to ensure eligibility for the use of municipal funds. At our conversation on April 1st, there was a sense that the Shop with the Senior program, as well as additional dollars to ensure that we could purchase a youth van, were supported, and those were kind of green-lighted to move forward. So for tonight, what we've done is looked to the list that Attorney Lial helped us prepare of ideas that are eligible for funding. We then reached out to all of you individually to ask for you to rank your top five choices, and what you have in front of you and also on the monitor is really the summary of those rankings. You'll see two columns, one that acknowledges just the total number of votes the idea got, and a second column that just acknowledges the, the top number one and top number two votes. Certainly happy to answer any questions that you all might have, but really, the, the conversation now transitions for you all to discuss ideas and ultimately look to prioritization. The way we'd have it is for you to identify those ideas that there's support to move forward, those could be added to a future agenda for consideration.
Yes, Commissioner Wilson.
I don't know if it's in your version as well, but it seems like my number one pick is missing.
Okay, let me see here.
I think it might have some implications if we add it back. Number seventeen.
Okay.
Number one pick, yep. It wasn't included.
So we certainly could add that in, and I can do, you can kind of do a quick on-the-fly, I apologize for that oversight.
It's all good, I just wanted to make sure that we were all clear what's going on.
Absolutely, yeah. We were working with a bunch of spreadsheets, so I apologize for the oversight if any of you see anything else. There were a couple of votes that went forward for Shop with the Senior, I tried to reach out to say that had already been cleared, but we did note a couple of votes that still remained for Shop with the Senior at the bottom. So Commissioner Wilson, you were saying number seventeen was your number one?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Question, Laura, has the, has the van been approved and purchased yet?
So I know the funds were approved, and I, we're just meeting with Parks and Rec this afternoon, and I think they're very, very close to that, and I do believe that the Shop with the Senior, we got the green light, but that would come forward to you at some point for approval prior to the event.
All right, Commissioners, so, just for the benefit of everyone who's maybe seen us for the first time and might be watching, do you want to take us to the results here? COO Lamb, and just talk about how that, you know, how that occurred?
Certainly. So the list that you're seeing has been, originally was generated through a list of ideas at our January 17th meeting, if I had that date right, excuse me, January 22nd meeting. Then we had the evaluation done by Attorney Lial, where the items that appeared to be eligible for general fund use were acknowledged in green. We had a discussion that allowed the youth van and the Shop with the Senior projects to get kind of a green light to go forward, and then the rankings that you see here were done individually by each Commissioner. So the total number of votes, you'll see in the first, you know, column to the far right, that acknowledges exactly that, the total number of votes. The next column, you've got your number one and your number two votes to try to acknowledge those ideas that received the most top votes, if you will. With Commissioner Wilson's correction, we would look to add numbers to seventeen, that would become total number of votes four, and total number of one and two votes would be number two. And the numbers in bold indicate the highest numbers, so in total number of votes, you'll see threes and fours as the highest numbers of votes, and I think in the one and two votes, you'll see threes highlighted as well.
So based on that, what came in first?
You get ties, so you, you should know there's never going to be an easy way, you don't have a clear vote getter. So you have a series of ties, you're, you've got four, you've got four for the YWCA Health Reproductive Fund, and the YWCA Human Trafficking, the incubator support, sorry, I'm sorry, that's a three, forgive me. So those are your two, and the one that we just added. And the support for people struggling with increase in water, wastewater rates. So again, the four votes would be the support for people struggling with increase in water wastewater rates, the YWCA Health Reproductive Fund, and the YWCA Human Trafficking. The next tier after that, you get into your threes, which would be the CANAC support, the incubator support, and projects that only the city can do, such as sidewalks, streets, speed bumps, downtown bathrooms. That's if you're going for the total number of votes.
Okay, and one thing that is not present throughout is this idea of a dollar amount associated with each one either. So depending on the dollar amount, there could just be one thing selected, or a dozen things selected.
Correct. In the initial discussion, there were a few items that had budgets adjusted, there's a longer version that you have in front of you. I believe for the YWCA Health Reproductive Fund and the Human Trafficking, you see twenty-five thousand represented, and the majority, everything else is sort of a TBD. As far as total dollars available, when you take the initial amount and you subtract the van allocation and the Shop with the Senior, it comes to a hundred and forty-four thousand. it comes to $144,475 remaining to allocate.
So, all right, thank you. So, you know, we can certainly, this is something we can discuss now. I will say, one thing that makes it difficult to fully informed to make rankings is saying, oh, drinking fountains are like so much per, you know, and so I want to do one or I want to do four, because you have no information related to that. Which I think adds to the challenge of determining how to make your best decision on the ranking side of things. So I know we talked about that before. Obviously, it's still the case. But anyway, that said, Commissioners, thoughts about how to move forward on this discussion? Open the input? Vice Mayor Hess?
Sure. I don't have any suggestions on how to move forward with this. I really appreciate, Laura, your work on this. Where do things fit that may have come to the fore since this work has been done? There's and it aligns with our commission values of gun violence. And I'm just wondering if something came up where, you know, $30,000 would help advance the Blueprint For Peace. Can that still fit in here? Can we still do that?
It's up to us. It's our process, our decision.
Certainly. I think what we've learned a bit through the process, and feel free to weigh in, Attorney Lial, that as it relates to making sure that all ideas are vetted for eligibility, is getting to specificity. So for example, tonight, the commission wanted to consider some support for implementation of Blueprint For Peace, but the details aren't known. You could certainly set aside a dollar amount. I've been in contact with Jen Hamas to understand where the gaps might be. But then she's very clear, the next step is I need to work closely with Attorney Lial to understand of the gaps, what might be eligible for general fund use. So you wouldn't need those details tonight. If there was support for the concept, you could have a set aside. And then we'd be able to come back after going through analysis to present some ideas that were both eligible and also helping to implement the blueprint.
I appreciate that. Maybe I'll jump in at this point. So this is a process we've created ourselves, so we have only ourselves to blame. I would suggest, if it still is there sort of a certain lack of clarity on this. So I will just start out saying, you know, we did kind of box ourselves in by creating this list, which then is not entirely consistent with other goal setting we have done necessarily. So it kind of stands alone from that. We asked our attorney to do an evaluation on that list, and then we sort of drew those guidelines for ourselves. So I've struggled with this, and I struggled with filling this out, and COO Lamb, you know that I did. And because I reflect back to, I mean, a number one core feel in my gut, and we have talked about it over and over again related to gun violence in Kalaunia. And the fact that that's not even on our priority list here, I struggle with that. And, you know, went to the, you know, we talk about it all the time, went to the big, I think, first ever gathering that Urban Alliance held, you know, sent Ben to the, you know, the graduation ceremony that's held there for change of status and still experience, you know, issues related to that, which are profoundly core issues in every single way. And then the disconnect between that kind of thing not being on the list for us, and like I said, it's not on you, it's on us. We created this, you know, it's a concern for me. So I don't, Commissioners, you know, we can belabor this, and I guess we could be exasperated with the idea of, are we dragging this out again? Let's just make a decision, go on. But I am a bit conflicted about where we've ended up here. So I'll just say that. Anyone else?
Yeah. So I think this is something that we should very much invest in, in stopping the violence and in all the great work that Urban Alliance is doing. I think that should be in the budget for the next year. How are we looking at that in the budget for next year? We don't want to start a whole new process here. There are plenty of things in the community that need money. We don't have a lot of money here. $144,000 isn't a lot of money. You have three people, three groups that are tied for first. I think you should give $50,000 to number six, $50,000 to number seven.
Go slowly here, okay. $50,000 to number six.
$50,000 to number seven, and then give the rest to 17. They came in first. Me. The one she left out.
Well, they asked for 25 in each one of those categories. You're saying double it?
Why not give them 50? 50 would make an impact. What do you think? You asked for it.
Okay, so this is one recommendation. Okay. So that leaves 44. And what did you say for the balance of 44 to go to?
17.
To 17. Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, Laura Lamb. I agree. I feel like we went through this exercise for the purpose of gaining consensus. And it seems like there is some sort of consensus on what are the most important to us. So however we decide to divide the funds, I believe it should be through those three ideas. It's my opinion.
Excuse me, I thought there were four. Didn't you make an adjustment and there's a tie with four, or is it just three?
We had three number fours. And those are the three that Commissioner Cooney just referenced. We had the YWCA Health Reproductive Fund. We had the YWCA Human Trafficking Fund. And with the correction with Commissioner Wilson's vote, we had the support for people struggling with increase in water wastewater rates. Those all received four votes.
Okay. Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. I do agree. I do believe that number 17, everyone is struggling with water rates right now. I do have questions into Director Baker, especially when it pertains to community action and the funds that they still have and have and have not dispersed. So for me, again, I can't speak on two of them because I need to abstain because I am employed by the YWCA. But I think really, I understand people need help with water. I get that. We know that. But I want to make sure that if we have an organization that has funding to help individuals within the situation of the water, that we know exactly where they stand in their funding, how many individuals they're helping on a weekly basis, how much money they have delved out so far since it started back in, I want to say, November. Those are some of the numbers that I would also want to see for some of these fundings. And that's why that one there did not have a vote on it for me, because I knew that there's stuff that's back there that I'm still waiting on answers from, especially for some of these funds, for the money. Because if we do have an organizational organizations that have, say, you know, $100,000 that's left, that can make a big dent, and then whatever we would allocate to number 17, that can make a bigger dent somewhere else in a priority that we have. And we are in May. It's not like we have to spend it all right at this moment. Again, Vice Mayor Hess, you're talking about the Blueprint For Peace, that could be something. You know, I don't believe that we have to put it all on the table right at this moment just because this list is in front of us. But if we do have some ideas that we believe that these funds should go to, then yes. And let some of these organizations start to use these funds as they can. But just for me, for number 17, is I would like more information regarding the funds that have already been delivered to organizations that should be helping our residents, because that's why we put that in place.
Yes, Vice Mayor Hess?
Agreed, Commissioner Decker. I don't think we can make any decisions currently without really knowing what that TBD is. And I know that if Commissioner Cradle were here, he would be advocating for K-NAC or some of the funding that's been put forward for the for K-NAC here. But I would like to, and you're right, I don't think that we should allocate it all right now at this point. I would like for Attorney Lial to look at the possibility of funding some of the gun violence initiatives that are happening through the Blueprint For Peace.
Yes, Commissioner Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to push back on some of my fellow commissioners. Yes, money was allocated to help residents with their water rates. But we all understand that we have received, my water bill in 2018 was $96 every quarter. I paid my bill yesterday, and it's $331 and some change. And so when we talk about, we want to wait for data, and we want to wait for, we know that we have households that are suffering and are not able to pay water. And what would that look like for community and quality of life if the water was to get turned off? So I'm going to advocate, you know, data is good, but we have real life people going through it. And so I'm lifting that up. The second thing is, is I completely agree with you, Dr. Cooney, that, you know, we heard a compelling back in 2021 presentation from Kamal that was working with Cradle at the time. And she talked about, they even had city staff that were coming because they couldn't afford the co-pays and really utilizing the reproductive fund. The other piece is that when I look at the human trafficking, when you look at the demographics of who's really being affected by that, that is black and brown people. And so when I hear, like, let's not make a decision tonight. This money was for us to make discretion. We don't need another study. We don't need another survey. If we were able to say, yes, Shopping With The Seniors, which is a lovely program, that's a done deal, and we are able to get a van for the youth, done deal. Why are we going back and forth over something that could impact households such as reproductive services, such as human trafficking funding to help people come out of that and also be able to move forward in life, and specifically, more specifically around the water rates? That is a huge thing, and we're going to be coming up for another increase very shortly. So I am advocating for us to make a decision tonight. It is not rocket science. If we can approve something for Shop With The Seniors and for a bus or transportation for youth, then we can do this to impact literal households right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Other thoughts, Commissioners? Thank you.
Well, I totally agree with what Commissioner Hoffman said. I think it's important, people are hurting right now. We've got some resources here to make a difference. We should do it now.
I have a couple questions related to that then. One thing I will say, Commissioner Hoffman, is that I really want to make sure that we publicize to individuals our services that are available to help save water. I'm in a similar situation as you, but my water bill for the last quarter is half of what you're talking about. So there may be a possibility, you've got some water leaks or something going on that's driving it maybe? No? Okay. So anyway, just something that people should know. If you see a really inordinately large water bill, think about that. Do I have a toilet that runs it all? Do we have anything dripping? That's one thing. Other thing, maybe it's a little bit of a hard question, but I know that there is there's grant funding available for this specific work at the YWCA right now. And I understand that the YWCA is determined to not apply for this at this time. It's due here in the month of May, and I'm not sure if you have any information on that. But I'm hoping that maybe a decision was made to not, the very likely applicant in the county community for the human trafficking funds that would be available. I've received some communication indicating that YWCA is not going to apply for them, looking for another agency that might be interested. So I'm just wondering, you know, and this is, I mean, I'm sure there's lots of good reasons for it, but is there some reason that we're aware of that the YWCA is determined to not apply for these funds at this time? I don't know if you probably just know anything about that. Okay. Yes, Commissioner Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, I want to lift up and remind us that the city committed $1 million of opera dollars to the gun violence. That's a lot of money, and I'm not saying that that's enough to really have a significant impact, but it is. When we're talking about $1 million versus 25, 25. So, you know, and the other piece is, I agree that because gun violence is so prevalent within our community, this is something that we need to be addressing in our general budget. This is not something that we should use a small pot of money that Commissioners have the discretion to utilize to really impact that. The Blueprint For Peace is a countywide initiative. It's a public health crisis. And so how do we lean on our community members and partners to help us with that? I just don't see this, we're seven individuals on this commission with a small amount of money. And I love the fact that we have the ability to support things that we're passionate about, like youth transportation and Shopping With The Senior. And I feel very passionate as well about human trafficking and folks being able to have assistance with their water bills versus going through an entire process through a community action agency where, once you go through that and you've been through that process, it becomes daunting and you get tired of telling your story. And it makes you feel like you're insignificant. So if there's something that we can do, I want to see us do it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Other conversations, your thoughts? Does somebody want to make, Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. I hear you, Commissioner Hoffman, I do. And Mayor, with you saying that the YWCA would not be requesting or is not going for these human trafficking funds, that could be money right there then to go to the water.
So I don't know all the inside details of that, so. Mr. Vice Mayor Hess?
Right, so my point was, I think, because there's a TBD by the water, I mean, it could take the whole $140,000. And so do, I mean, so what is, what's the need there? I think we need to know the need before we do the allocation. Right? Commissioner Cooney?
I don't, we're not talking $20 million here, so we're talking about a small amount of money that we know there's going to be people needing $44,000 for water support. We know that even if they get a grant, there's not going to be enough to deal with the reproductive rights and the human trafficking. We can do something to make an impact, a little bit of an impact, and it's right in front of us, and we should do it.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we spend $50,000 on the YMCA Health Reproductive Fund, $50,000 on human trafficking, and the rest on the water fund.
Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Decker?
I just need to clarify. Is the YWCA requesting these funds or are they not for the human trafficking? Is that what you just said, or?
I mean, I don't really want to complicate it with that, you know, specific grant, as I understand, they're not applying for it. But, you know, there's really no additional information here to further inform them.
Mayor, may I? This was two of the initiatives that I brought forward when we had the opportunity to say, what were your priorities as to what we could do with the commission funding that we receive every year? We had that overlay that came from 2023 that we did not use. And so I have not been in contact with the YWCA, neither have they been in contact with me. However, I knew back when we heard that compelling presentation that there was something that we could do in reference. So I brought this forward as we were asked to do as Commissioners.
Anything else, Commissioner Decker?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other discussion? Kirk Borland, please call the roll.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes. Yes, sorry, yes, for number 17. I am abstaining from six and seven.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners, the motion passes. Manager, anything else on our agenda here?
Nope, that was our only item under work session, so turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you so much, Commissioners, for going through this entire exercise. And now this particular piece of work is behind us, right? Just want to remind everybody that we do have a business meeting at 7 o'clock. There is a public comment period near the beginning of that business meeting as well, which is three minutes. So prepare your comments accordingly, and I'll see everybody in a little bit. We adjourned. We adjourned.